It's two.
Yeah, have you? Well, usually I'm much better. Today I'm off my game.
All right, I think, I think we're ready to get started. Mike? Five o'clock. Dan, you said? Okay. Let me call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, February seventh to order. Candy, can we have a roll call for the board, please?
Fashion?
Here.
Beal?
Here.
Bally?
Here.
Glitch?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stitch?
He's on his way to.
And much.
Here.
So Candy, Luca's on his way.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So Jenny, if you want to call your board to order.
I'd like to call the library board meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Fashion?
Here.
Bergstrom?
Here.
Gatlin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Santuli Shuda?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
And Stater?
Here.
Okay. All right, we can move down to item five, which is business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Five A is review and discuss new library site selection, including geotechnical exploration report, potential library sites adjacent to North Alpine Parkway. Review preliminary library slash senior center site concepts for Brook Street site. Project, project cost considerations and provide any further direction. So I, I think we're going to make a little change. I think we're going to have the library team present first, and then we can see if there are any questions from anybody from the public that's here. And then I'm going to have Martin talk a little bit, and then we'll kick it back to the village board after that. Okay? So Jeff?
All right. Good evening. Is this working, do you think? Hear me? All right. Well, I thought I'd just summarize quickly what we've done since the last time that, that we talked. And we just recently went through this with the library board, but after our last village board meeting, we took the three different scenarios that we had. There's two possible ideas for the Brook Street site and then the Alpine Parkway, and went through and did a cost analysis of those three scenarios to try to determine what the challenges were for the different ideas there. And so OPN had put together some images that go with the three different scenarios, and it might be easiest to, to just go down and take a look at those. I think people, we can stop here on this slide, actually. Thank you. I think people are familiar with what we're talking about with the Brook Street site, but it incorporates the, the existing library, senior center, and the, the post offices on that piece. We did not include that, the street there, but we did include using the alley way that's kind of on the backside there as an access way to get in and out of the site in the different scenarios that we looked at. And then the Alpine Parkway site, it's, it's the, kind of the lower half of this image where you see that, that darker farm field there down at the bottom. And so if we go scroll forward, we should get to images here at some point of the three different scenarios. I have to size those down, and I think the easiest way to talk through it is to look at the, the library only image first and talk about that scenario, and then we'll talk about how things would change. You'll have, you'll have to go scroll up to get to that one. It should be one right above this, right there. Okay. So the, kind of the summary of the challenges for that site have to do with the fact that it, it's 2.4 acres, so there's not quite as much space as we'd like to have. There's demolition of all the existing structures and pavement and, and things that would need to be moved and relocated, like utilities and things that exist on that site. And then another whole list of challenges has to do with the fact that this is a relatively flat, low-lying piece of property, and so the water table is just a couple of feet below grade, and the soils that are there are poor soils for bearing capacity. So I know it takes a long time for people to understand that not all dirt is created equal, and lots of places in, in your village, unfortunately, when you dig below the surface and you want to build something on top of that soil, it just doesn't have the ability to support that structure. And this is one of those instances where this site has both poor soil and the water, and so there's considerations for that, you know, during construction. And then there's excavation, removal of the poor soil and, and replacement. We had those types of issues also at the, the Main Street site. And then the other thing that's going on is we have, we have an existing library functioning there and a senior center and a post office, and so there's a whole slew of issues with how do we relocate those entities and keep them functioning while we're, we would work on construction here. And just as a note, in the scenarios that we came up with here, we, we included costs for what we thought the library, the impacts to the library project would be, but we didn't take into account what the impacts would be for the senior center or the post office, you know, what the cost would be for those groups to relocate and, and how they would function in the timeframe that they're either permanently or temporarily not able to be on this piece of property. And then the, the final thing that, that's the major item is just that there is, there has been some delay already in, in the time that we've taken to step back and look at site selection. It'll be five months since we started with civil engineering on Main Street until today. So we have, we have that, I guess, delay or extension of time included in all three scenarios. But then there's also the escalation that we're trying to estimate that would have to do with, depending on the scenario, how quickly can we get back to design and how quickly can we get to construction documents and get this thing out to bid and get construction pricing locked in as things, inflation and construction costs keep going up. And so on this site, the escalation portion would be the timeframe that it would take to, you know, figure out where the post office and the senior center are going and finding them new homes. There's potentially remodeling at those new homes. There's the design before they can remodel the new home and get all of that taken care of so that they can eventually move and, and, and be out of the way. So in, in this scenario, we looked at a year's worth of that kind of timeframe for, we're waiting for other pieces of the puzzle to fall into place that would push our construction out, potentially that 12 months. And so a couple of other things to talk about on this site that aren't part of those major categories is just that we, we've been wanting to include a geothermal HVAC system in the project. The way that we would have this scenario where, where basically the, the orange and the, the red are all paved areas and that blue area that shows stormwater, potentially we can be handling some stormwater there, but the bulk of the stormwater for this site would end up going into underground vessels that filter the water, hold the water, and filter it out. And so we would have to put those somewhere, and we would put them, we're able to put them underneath the parking lot. So potentially one of those parking lots, one of those orange areas becomes an area that we could have our geothermal wells underground, excuse me, the, the stormwater management, and then potentially there's enough space left in this scenario to put the geothermal in the other parking area underground, underground. Obviously, it's, it's more costly to do those things underneath the parking lots, but at least we think here we have space to be able to, to keep the geothermal. And so if we move to the next slide, which is the more complicated idea of the, the senior center and the library being on the same piece of property, you know, we have all of the challenges that we just talked about for the library only. In this instance, though, a couple of things that are happening with parking wouldn't allow us, there's just no place for us to put the geothermal wells. Any place that we have here that we could put structures under the parking would be used for stormwater management. You can see around the perimeter of the site where there's those long orange sections, those are on-street parking that are, that we basically took the city right-of-way and said, hey, we need to add this to our site to find enough space for parking. And so those areas would be parking stalls that you'd be able to drive in off of those streets. And then the way the math works out, having to have parking for the senior center and the library both, if we look at the total quantity of that and what we're able to get here on the site, we still don't have enough parking. So in the final version that we presented to you here for the combined solution, we put 55 stalls underground. So if you look at that, that, that piece right there, if you look at where the, that landscaping is on the corner of the, what's shown as the library building, you can imagine a complete square there underground that maybe that would all be one level of underground parking part, mostly with the building on top, but maybe there's a plaza or a terrace or that parking could extend further underground outside the building, doesn't necessarily need to be underneath the building. And so, you know, the added challenges here are we have less space because we're taking up room with the second building footprint, and we need, you know, more parking total because of the two different entities that are operating here. And so there's additional costs for the on-street parking in the right-of-way, and then there's a more significant cost for the underground parking. And if we do try to put parking underground, there's, there's cost during construction for the de-watering and dealing with poor soils and the structure that's related to that, plus the structure of the two-story library. And then, you know, kind of ongoing, that, that, we're basically going to have that parking garage is going to be below the water elevation for the rest of its life, and there's going to have to be ways to, to waterproof that and take care of an constant, kind of ongoing de-watering system to keep the, the water from overcoming that parking garage. Again, those are things that can be done. Lots and lots of parking garages in the city of Madison have those types of permanent de-watering systems in them. There's just a, an initial cost for that, and then there's an ongoing cost for that. And then the other thing that is more challenging with this scenario is, again, we have the, we have the relocation, but, you know, in the, I guess in the first scenario, we're just imagining that we, we, the senior center disappeared, you know, we, we got them off the crop property. We're not sure where they went, but at least they're, they're out of the way and we can move forward. In, in this scenario, we have, we have both the library and the senior center, and they have to, they have to move out temporarily. The post office would be gone for good, but the library and the senior center have to go to temporary facilities and then eventually would come back here. And so we still have that same type of escalation or timeframe that we're working through all of those things, but then the added layer to that is that the senior center needs time to do their, their visioning and their planning and figuring out what this new senior center wants to be, and they really need to get through all of that before the library would be able to hook back up with them in tandem and continue to design both of the, both of the uses here together, you know, to, to be able to get these things coordinated on this site. So there's not only the timeframe of how are we setting people up and getting this site cleared off and empty and ready to go, but then there's the added timeframe for the senior center to do their thing, and we're, we would basically be waiting for them to get to where we are and say, okay, now we're all ready to start doing civil engineering because we have two buildings that are in sync and, you know, need to be coordinated together. So that's how we came up with an added timeframe for this project, which we had it at 24 months, that we would, we would be pushing off the start of construction for the library. Are there questions before we go to, to the Alpine slide? I guess maybe we, I don't know if we wanted, just clarifications, maybe?
Hi. You mentioned stormwater, and right now that's a flat lot, asphalt lot, and the stormwater is running off it now. Why would it be different with a building on it?
Well, the, the stormwater or the rain that falls on the buildings and all the stormwater and rain, you know, that falls on our impervious surfaces, which basically, if you look at the, the plan, that gray area in the middle is, is concrete sidewalk, walkway. So this, the whole site's basically going to be impervious. All of that water needs to be captured and needs to be handled per the, you know, stormwater regulations for Dane County and the DNR, and so we can't just let it hit the ground or run off the roof and run into the storm sewer over on the corner of the street. It needs to be managed on-site, and then it can move to those facilities. So the, the idea with the underground storage systems is that it handles the big capacities, and then that water gets filtered and flows out, and it eventually goes to the, to the storm sewer.
Right.
But it needs to be handled on-site before that happens.
How many underground parking stalls are there?
In this scenario, you know, we're, we're just doing math of what we thought we can get on top and what we could get along the perimeter. And so underground, the idea is that there would be 55 would be underneath the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the Alpine image, then. There's a couple of things to talk about there. So we've, we've got the building fairly high up on this piece of property. There's the intersection there, and I'm not sure what that.
Oregon Parkway.
Street is, Oregon Parkway. And so we're, we're uphill from the corner down at the bottom where the, where the new village hall's going to be, so this is, this is kind of uphill. And where that intersection is, is actually the highest piece of, of the property there. And so we're trying to stay up close to that and stay up on high ground. And what we've done here is taken the footprint that we envisioned before and landed it and then just put, you know, this is just a placeholder for the square footage of parking. There's, there's lots of things to be considered with how the parking gets designed and, you know, landscape islands and places for stormwater management to happen within and whatever, but we're, we were just trying to get to the size and scale and get the layout right where we've got, you know, drop-off and book drop and all of those things kind of sorted out. And the only things that are challenging here, the biggest dollar thing that's challenging here is that as, as we build the parking lot to the south and we build the building out there to the east, we get out over that hill, and so we'll have to fill underneath the building and underneath the parking lot in certain areas when the grade drops away. And so we've got a budget here for that, to fill underneath the building slab and under the parking lot areas. And then we did put some money in here for what, what, you know, we wanted to do, but also saw in the Nature Alliance recommendations, which is of this portion, which is basically everything that is captured in this, on the screen right now, that anything outside the building footprint in the parking lot area, that those areas could be restored, you know, is that, is that native prairie in areas that are higher up? Is it different types of plantings in the low area? And then we would want to connect the trails, not only to continue the loop that's already there for the people that use the park, but we're going to want connections to a lower level kind of community outdoor recreation gathering space that would probably be on the downhill east side of the building. And so we budgeted money in for enhanced landscaping, site restoration, and then those walking and biking pathway connections. There will be a little bit of time here, so we have that same five-month time that we've gone through here in site selection, but we will take about two months to rework the conceptual design for the building. There's lots of opportunities here for us to, to explore really good things that we have with the, both the topography and obviously the views. And so we would take time to rearrange the spaces inside the building, rearrange the layout of the building itself a little bit, and then figure out how this stuff works together. So before we would be able to get back to doing civil engineering where we dropped off at the other, at the Main Street site, we would have to rework a little bit that conceptual design. So there's a little bit of time in here for that as well, and that's how we came up with the cost for the Alpine site. Are there questions about that one?
Okay. I'm not seeing any. All right. So, so Jennifer, what I want to do now is there's a couple, I think there's a couple people in the public. You, sure, of course you can.
So I just want to point out that I don't want it to appear that we're ignoring the Nature Recommendation, uh, Nature Alliance recommendations, and so a lot of this work was done prior to the report becoming available, so I just want to give you that context. Um, the intent of the library board would be to work together with the Nature Alliance on the recommendations per your direction, so I just want to provide that context because some of those things aren't, you know, necessarily incorporated yet or would be a conversation moving forward.
Okay. All right. All right, so why don't we, there's a couple people in the public, Jeff, there, there might be some questions for you or Brett or, I see Teresa. Teresa, do you want to speak? Or not? No? Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else like to speak in reference to the library? Mary? No? Okay. All right, then I guess Martin, ask Martin to, to say a couple of things and then we'll go to the village board.
Sure. Uh, so hopefully, you had a couple hours to read my memo. I was in my office last week thinking how I could try to make everybody in the village angry at me. So, no, I, I think like many of you, as, as Jeff said, we've been kind of on this five-month odyssey since we kinda learned about some of the issues with the North Main site. And I think like everybody, I wanted to get more information. And I think that the library board and village board have done a very good job of asking very good questions and gathering the type of information that's been presented here tonight. And I think what I'm seeing is, is a picture is, is being painted that, while not ideal, in every circumstance, the Keller Alpine site provides probably the most, addresses the most needs. When you look at the costs that Jeff has presented here tonight, the impacts to services in the short term to both the library and the senior center, but also beyond the library and senior center when we're talking about impacts to, to financial costs. The senior center in particular, I think is going to be dramatically impacted. If we pick the Brook Street site, particularly if we do a library-only project there, when you start thinking about the logistics of how that's all going to work, you could very well see the senior center out of, in a temporary space for four years or more at that point. So I, I guess with all that information, I really see that the options for the village board get very, very narrow moving forward if a site downtown is picked. And there's a lot of lack of flexibility in the board's future for these projects and these services and services beyond just these projects. And so, I wanted to put some together, that kind of articulated what I was seeing, so that you guys have that information. There is also a couple of things that I wanted to kind of fill in my own knowledge gap, just having only been here for about nine months. And that was the history of the Keller Alpine site and then the, how the library project kind of originated. And so, you know, what I learned obviously was, these Keller Alpine sites have been contemplated and programmed for a public facility for 25 years. So it's not necessarily something new and might be new to some of us newbies in the community, but it is something that multiple village boards have considered. And so I think pivoting the library project there was, made a lot more sense in that context than maybe some of us realized. And then as far as the library project itself, I think we're 13 years into when the library board first discussed the need for a new library. And I think, at a certain point in time, I think in 2015, we did the Civic Campus Master Plan. And there was sort of, you know, I had a conversation with Elise on this, where at that point in time, there was a set of circumstances that it made sense to, to have that plan, to go through that planning process. But if you, if you read the Civic, the, the plan itself, things changed really dramatically in that three-year period. It kinda had a two, initial two-year period and then it kinda got extended out another year because things had changed so much that it had to change all of its recommendations and alternatives that it was considering. And it even makes statements that the, all the information or some of the information may not be relevant or even could be possible to even be done anymore. And interestingly, it said that it picked the North Main site without doing any further technical analysis and assumed that the library could fit on that site. So, I think, kind of all those things taken together, obviously I agree with the library board's recommendation that maybe doesn't, isn't ideal, doesn't hit all, all the marks, but it hits a lot of them and helps give the village some opportunity and some flexibility going into the future. One thing I wanted to make comment on was Jennifer Way. I know that she's been, and I think this hasn't come up before, gets lost, but I know she's been staying in contact with some of our larger donors to the library project. I think, was it a thou- thousand or more, or 5,000 or more you've been staying in regular contact with?
A lead donor, if I'm to say that, yeah.
Yeah. That's how many roughly?
Uh, like around 70.
So, ever since five months ago, you know, these issues came up, you've been staying in regular contact with them, keeping them updated, telling them what's going on, what the process is. And I think you told me you had one maybe pulled their donation? And I think the other day you told me one said they would increase their donation if it went out to Alpine? So, I think what she's done is tremendous work. And I think that speaks volumes about her, what she does. But I think people are paying attention and, and, like I said in my memo, it's not an easy decision, but when you kind of paint the whole picture, I think the Alpine site hits all, hits the most marks.
Okay. Anybody questions for Martin? And Martin, I'll just say that, I mean, the, and I think that my fellow board members would agree, the, the memo was fantastic. Really well done, so.
Can I make a
Yeah, of course.
Oh, sorry.
And then Mike.
Okay.
Amanda, then Mike.
I just wanted to suggest that we take that 11-page beginning of our packet, the memo that Martin wrote, put it prominently on our website, like, so that people have that readily accessible just to see the history of the project and kind of see where we're at now, if everybody's amenable to that.
Mike?
I think that's a great idea and in fact, I was gonna bring up just doing a published, a volume of your published works.
Yeah.
There you go. All right. All right, so, so one of the things I just wanna bring up with the board, I, I had mentioned this to, to Jennifer and to, and to Martin before we get into discussion is, I know the packet came out on last Wednesday and I, I've, I've asked a couple of you bef- when, when you got here, but I was just wondered if, has there been enough time for the information to be out there for the public? Given this is such a big project. And I was floating the idea that, that we would take action at the next, the next board meeting. I think the feedback I got is people think that, that last Wednesday was enough time and we've gotten emails from people. So the information has, has gotten out there, people have seen it and people feel comfortable that we're probably gonna take some action here. Does that make sense? Okay, all right. So, I guess it's time for us. All right, everybody has, yeah, Amanda?
Should I make a motion?
If you wish to.
I would love to make this motion. So, I'd like to make the motion that the village board officially designate Keller Alpine Meadows Park as the future location of the library.
Okay, so we can motion?
Oh, sorry, what, what'd you like me to say?
I would just say the former, the former school site.
Okay.
That's, I think that's a little claim.
We may not even have it.
You could just say follow the library board's recommendations.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
We'll follow the library board's recommendations.
So we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Carleen? Yes, I'm gonna, can I, I'm gonna go first, 'cause I, 'cause I, people, people are probably gonna be surprised at what I'm going to say. But, so we're in discussion, so I, I wrote a couple of things, so this has kind of been, I think for me, an interesting journey for me. Been part of the fundraising, supporting the idea of the, the new library. I've always wanted just what was best for the village. I've always supported the idea of a downtown library. I still like that idea. I listened to the residents who attended the listing sessions, read all the emails. When the idea of the North Main site was not going to work for the library, I, I guess I was critical of that decision and needed, and, and, and got more answers. We got more answers now to that. I also need to know, you know, how, need to know how and if a downtown library could work. I needed to know that for myself. What, was the library downtown still possible? Tell me how it can work, how it can't work. I, like probably many of you, I had a lot of sleepless nights. This is probably the hardest thing I've had to face since a trustee. And I saw this, this, this question, I saw the division in the, in the, in our community too. Difference of opinions, where it should go, where it shouldn't go. It also made me feel uncomfortable that I was at odds with Jennifer and Jenny, two, two, two people who I worked very closely to raise a lot of money for the, the new library. I kept trying to find ways to still put the library downtown. Could we do this, the combination of the library, senior center, et cetera? So now we have new information, cost, site analysis, implications for delays, and other projects like the senior center. I'll be honest, I'd still prefer the library be built, built downtown, but I also wanna do what's right for the village in terms of our future projects and understand the challenges a village and library downtown would bring. I do think it's time for us to move on and I think we get, we have, need to do a little community healing. I think we need that, 'cause there, I think there, there is a division. I appreciate the compromises and the recommendations of the Nature Alliance have made. I wanna see the recommendations incorporated into the library design to provide, prevent any environmental damage, increase flooding. And I've heard, you know, people are concerned about the habitat in that area. I also appreciate Martin's thoughtful memo with the background and highlighting some of, some of the projects on the horizon for the village. I mean, honestly, for me, I, I have to say, I'd rather see the library at Alpine than a large apartment building, if, if I'm honest. So just lastly, I think it's, it's time for us to move on and get the library built. Thanks. So Luke, sorry, it took so long.
Can you just pull up the cost difference? If we kept the library downtown, it was over $2 million additional dollars that you, we would need to spend. And if we kept it at Alpine, it was 700 and some odd thousand?
Just 56 in the packet.
Page wet, 56? See if I can
You gotta scroll up to get to the bottom line.
2.254, thousand.
This is with the senior center, just the library on that site, so nine considering senior center next to Keller.
So if we include the senior center with the library at the current site, we're asking additional 4.3 million. If we just do the library at the current site, we're asking for an additional 2.25 million. And if we consider Alpine Parkway, it's 759,000.
Plus six, plus more time.
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to see that one more time, thank you.
Okay, Luke, done? Okay, all right, Derek, you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, it's been a debate of price versus cost the entire time. Yeah, I mean, I think that pretty much, most people are ready to move forward with this project. But I, I very much appreciate Martin's packet and I mentioned that to him prior to the meeting. A lot of good information there. I'm gonna take one little big F' you, though, Martin. I think, as a village board however, I disagree with your assertion that we should wait to try and preserve the rest of the Keller Alpine area if this building is put out there. I think that should probably be made a priority if that's the way that this all goes. So, just throw that out there for food for thought for future meetings.
Okay. Amanda, something else?
Yeah, just a question. Can, Martin, do you wanna explain why that is or what your thinking was? 'Cause I, I'm not sure I got the full picture either, I just was wondering.
So, well, the history of the site is that it's always kind of been contemplated and planned for active and passive recreational uses up in that corner. And the village has revisited that several times over the last, you know, couple decades. I think, for me, I would hate to see the board make a decision in relation to this project when there are other stakeholders that may not be aware that this is on the table as part of the library project that may wanna be involved, may wanna have a say in, in the future of those properties. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, we were actually already had funds budgeted to do a, a planning process this year that would look at all of these properties again, kind of re-initiate what we've done every other five years or so. And I think this kind of had more input on that property. Not to say that eventually that may be the decision.
Anybody else? Yeah, Carleen?
So, I, well, Mike and I came on the board at the same time, so. Mike and I are the newbies to the board and this has been an incredibly steep learning curve. Very, very informative. As somebody who actually didn't live in the village until just before I joined the board, not, I live in the nearby area. This is, this whole process has been really eye-opening as far as how engaged or disengaged the community is. It's pretty clear that the community feels a lot of things about, about this project in particular. And, and it seems like we come down in one camp as a whole that we want what's best for the village and we just don't always see eye to eye on what the best for the village is. So I just wanna put out there that I am also one of those people who would like to see this be, the, the rest of the property put aside for conservation. And I understand that we need to be thinking about what's best for the village as a whole. And so, we don't wanna make decisions about those kinds of things hastily, but I think it has been made really clear in this process that there is a large contingent of our village who would like to see that set aside as conservation land and has, has reluctantly said, yeah, okay, if we're gonna develop, let's develop a library there. Clearly, I was hearing all along, this property is going to be developed. And this, I think, is a really, really incredible win-win. And I will put the caveat of if we set aside the rest of the property for conservation. And, and so I feel really strongly about that and I certainly hope and will push hard for that to be the case as we move forward.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah. I support putting the library out at Keller Alpine. I also think that given the level of concerns that we've all heard from, from people about putting it out there, that we have to do just more, a little bit more than just say we're gonna put it out at Keller Alpine. I think if we leave it at that, we're going to have a lot of upset citizens and we're gonna have a very bumpy road for the library building committee and the library board as we go forward with trying to design what that project is and go forward with that project. Because we clearly have a section of our citizens that are, are going to be unhappy with us putting it out there. And I would like to respond and let them realize that we're listening to their concerns. One of those is I gotta say, I do support turning that into a conservancy. I support including the remaining acreage that is, is from the old school site, the, the part that the library isn't gonna use. I support including that in a parkland and, and putting that all into conservancy. I also think that there are a number of recommendations that the Oregon Nature Alliance made in their report that dovetails very well with, I mean, I've been at just about every library meeting on this building since y'all were gonna cite it in my neighborhood. And what I have heard consistently was, we want natural landscape. And what I have heard consistently was we want natural landscaping. We want to do what's right. We want to be friendly to the environment, et cetera, et cetera. I heard those because I went to all those meetings. And there's a good chunk of Oregon that hasn't heard that, hasn't been at the meetings, hasn't read your documentation, and is going to take your word on it or not. And the concern that I have is the or not. The concern that I have is people upset that it's going out there and not trusting that we will do the right thing with that land. And I think it's a responsibility of the village board and the library board to be sure that we do the right thing with that land. So what I want to do tonight, in addition to just passing this, is I want to look at including formally in the MOU some of the requirements, some of the suggestions, recommendations, I guess is the term, that the Oregon Nature Alliance had. And that, to the extent practical, they will be included in the project design. Because I think that that sort of assurance, that sort of commitment on our part will make the citizens of Oregon a whole lot more comfortable that we're going to do the right thing with putting a library out in this area. And I think other than that, we're just saying, trust us. And clearly, given the fact that we're putting the library there to begin with, they don't trust us. So I'm going to pass around a motion that I intend to make once we decide to put the library in that spot. And we can have a discussion on it then.
All right. So should we deal with the motion on the table first? And the motion is to cite the new library based on the library board's recommendation. And we had a motion from Amanda and a second from Carleen. So let's take a vote on that. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hosed?
No.
Okay. All right. Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to put forward a motion. I'll read it, since most of you haven't seen it yet. It's to direct the village staff to, one, prepare a draft amendment to the memorandum of understanding with the library board designating the North Alpine Parkway site as the future library. And to incorporate into the MOU by reference the language regarding numbers three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine of the recommended library elements from the January 4, 2022 Oregon Nature Alliance's ecological assessment, including hiring an experienced ecological landscaper and directing the library board and its design consultants to address these items to the extent practicable in the project design. Two, finalize and present the draft agreement with OPN Architects for design, engineering, and construction services for consideration and potential action. So what this commits us to, if we go down this path, is managing the storm water in a way that mimics the pre-settlement runoff conditions using green infrastructure methods. So alternative storm water management, exfiltration tiles, et cetera. Redirecting the paved path around the library. Using native vegetation in the library landscaping and limiting turf areas. Minimizing overall land disturbance and implementing robust erosion and sediment control practices during building. Design the building and parking lots to blend in with adjacent landscape and minimize nighttime lighting and impacts on wildlife and dedicate space in the library for teaching about nature. Those are the criteria. I've heard the library board and individuals in their discussions, nobody has a problem with this. Nobody has a problem with any of these because they're part of the original goals of what we wanted to build at the library. Spelling it out for our citizens, spelling out our commitment on this will make it a whole lot easier for everyone going forward because everyone will know upfront what we're intending to do. And no one's going to distrust the fact that we're going to mistreat that area.
So Mike, just a clarification. The things you read off, was that three through nine?
Yes.
The numbers, okay. Just one.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about number seven? The way Mike stated it was room for our nature education, which I think would be very easy to do. But the way the recommendation is in the report is a nature center. And I think those could be perceived as very different things. And one could require a significant portion of funding depending on how you envision that. So I think I'd like to see further clarification on that one before we move forward. As you've seen the numbers here, we're gonna be faced, one of the first things we're faced with moving forward is trying to cut our project to fit the dollars available, which will be, you know, sharpening our pencil and making it fit what we have available. And so to commit to a nature center that could require additional funding, so I just want to make sure that that's thought about carefully. There's definitely ways we can incorporate a nature education within our project. But those are, could be perceived as very different things. So I just want to make sure that the board is very clear about what that expectation is, especially if there's dollars associated with that because we are faced with those fiscal considerations.
Yeah, Derek?
I guess I would second Mike's motion on this, if I can. And as far as what Jennifer is saying, I hear your concerns there. I think... Mike had mentioned something about we're practicable. And I would think that the nature center kind of fits within that realm.
Yeah, so just, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I mean, so one of the things is the funds that we've raised available were given for the purposes of the library, not necessarily a nature center. So we, you know, and the impact fees can be used for the library, but not a nature center. So, you know, we just have to be careful about how we word that to make sure it doesn't seem like we're not fulfilling whatever intention that you would like us to do. There's definitely room for, you know, lots of different nature education opportunities. I think if we ask the Nature Alliance, they'd have lots of ideas to work with us on. Those could be very different expectations, which I'm concerned about.
Okay. So we have, Carleen, so we have a kind of a motion here from Mike.
I'm gonna ask Mike if he's willing to take a friendly amendment and add number 10, which is protect water quality by limiting fertilizer and pesticide use.
I would include number 10, except number 10 is really a public works issue because we're the ones who do that. So while I support doing that, it's not on the library.
Got it.
Okay. So Mike, you basically have made the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Seconded.
Oh, Derek second, okay. And the other discussion, Amanda?
Yeah, so while I support all of these things, and I know the library intends to do their best with all of these, I'm a little worried that it might tie their hands a little. I'm wondering, you know, because there are budget constraints. You know, if we can't do one of these, what does that mean? Is it, does that mean that, you know, if we can't afford to do A or B or whatever, like number four and a five, whatever they are, I don't know what those correspond to. But like, what if it isn't financially possible? Then does that mean the library would be forced to cut in another area related to the library? Or do they have the flexibility to say, look, we tried, but we can't do these numbers?
Mike, take a shot.
Ultimately, my understanding of the MOU is that the design of the library has to come back to the village board eventually to be approved. So my intent is to reassure the citizens of Oregon that their concerns are being taken into account. The term extent practical can be justified. I mean, if there are deviations, we can justify it during the final approval and things. My intent is to make sure that we do our very best to implement as much of this as possible to meet the concerns of the people that have raised very valid objections to putting a library out in that area.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hosed? Okay. And then Mike, your second. Is that another?
There was, second point is finalize and present the draft agreement with OPN Architects. This is instructing our staff. Finalize and present the draft agreement with OPN Architects for design, engineering, and construction services for consideration and potential action. So that we get moving on the library project.
All right, so that's, you're making a motion on that? Or is that just a statement? You want a motion?
It's a motion because it's directing our staff to do that.
Do we have a second? Amanda? Okay, so Mike and Amanda, any other discussion?
Jenny, Jennifer has a question.
Can I just respond that we have been working on that information since last April? So Attorney Callan from Stafford Rosenbaum is working with OPN on the final, some of the final contract items. The contract itself is site-dependent. And so part of the thing that's held us up is because the contract is specific to a site. That was kind of a reason that it's kind of been waiting, so.
So you're saying this isn't needed, this motion?
If you want to do, we're working on it. We will, that's one of our goals, to get that ready to, if not the next meeting, the very following meeting. So we're doing everything, we kind of move that forward. Jeff, our owner's rep, has already worked with OPN on the contract. And Attorney Callan from Stafford and Rosenbaum for the village has also reviewed the contract in depth. And they're working with OPN on a few final discussion items to get that ready to go.
Then this is my mistake, I'm fine pulling this.
You want to pull it?
And we'll just let them go as they're proceeding.
Very good, okay. So I think we are done with the library board. Jenny, you want to adjourn, you're board?
Do you guys have anything else before we adjourn? I have to take a motion to adjourn then.
I will, just want to say thank you to the village board. This has been a long process, for us included. We've learned a lot about this process. We've learned a lot from this experience. We've heard and been on the front lines of hearing from the community and the different opinions and the different options and the different opportunities that came out of that. I think you made the right decision as far as making, enabling the library board to build a really quality library that's going to service the community for a long period of time while also recognizing what the rest of the community needs to get out of that decision. So I commend you. Thank you for today and allowing us to be part of the process.
And I just want to say, if I could, Randy?
Yeah.
Thanks to everyone on the library board. You're all, well, almost all of you are volunteers. Thanks for, I know this has been a really long, rocky road. And hopefully, the end is kind of in sight. But thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, guys. Can I have a motion to adjourn the library board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much. We really appreciate your help and work. And we're looking forward to what comes next, so thank you.
All right. Village Board meeting continues. We'll go to seven. We'll go to approval of the January 17 village board meeting minutes. I'll take a motion. Looks like, well, let me just, so it looks like Carleen, myself, Luke, and Mike were at the meeting. So, all right, Luke is, and Mike, okay? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hosed, okay. Public appearances. Let's see if we have anybody. So, public comment? Uh, no, I don't, yes, of course. Yeah. Jerry, can you get Mike back in here?
Hey, Mike?
He just found you. We're still in the middle of the meeting.
Here we go, Mike. All right, public comments. This part of agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody? Teresa?
Hi, thank you. Teresa Nelson, Oregon Nature Alliance. We're disappointed in the library decision, but, you know, understand the decision-making process. And we're encouraged that the issues that we've raised regarding the environmental impacts of development in that park area, that they're being heard and becoming part of the dialogue and plans. While we aren't quite where we'd like to be, I believe that we are on a promising path. And I look forward to continuing the discussions regarding protection and restoration of the rest of the greater Keller Alpine Meadows Park area and how the library will integrate with those larger plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Anybody else? Clarice? No? You're good? All right. All right, let's go to nine is proclamations and announcements. Nine A is, we have upcoming meetings and events. What do you put in your calendar? We'll go to 10, report of village officers, village administrators' report. Martin has got his report in there. Anybody have any questions for Martin? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to 10B, which is a report from Director Public Works on the January 20 public information meeting for the 2022 Jamesville Street South Prairie Parkway Intersection Project.
Thanks, Randy. We had a really, huh? We had a really nice meeting. Actually, 26 people showed up, which is, I think, a record for us in a public information meeting. And it was engineer, the engineer SRF Consulting gave a very nice presentation. There were a few questions, but I think it was just very well attended. Some very positive things. People were mostly just concerned about what was going to be closed and when. And you can see kind of in the exhibits that were prepared there by our engineers, really what's going to be happening at that intersection. Things are moving along well. The intersection is currently out to bid for construction right now. And Right Away is progressing nicely. The Right Away acquisition is progressing nicely. So everything's looking good. And hopefully, we will have signals out there by the time school starts, is our hope.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Yeah, Amanda?
Not a question, just a comment. Thanks for the staff pursuing this because I brought up a lot of these safety concerns in the first place because I knew someone who lived on the corner there and the board taking action to make it a lot safer for everybody. So I'm just thrilled that this is moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Jeff, thank you. All right, we'll go to 10C, report from Director Public Works again. Oh, that's Jeff. On the status of Cooper King's Eagle Scout project in Prairie Mountain Cemetery.
I thought Cooper might be here tonight, but I just would like to recognize him. You know, we try to have, we usually have about one, maybe two Eagle Scout projects a year. This was a neat project. And Cooper wanted to put kiosks, kind of information kiosks, up at three locations in the cemetery where we determined. Candy and I are working on kind of some laminated maps that will go up in those kiosks. And just kind of a you are here kind of thing, not for the people that are there, but for the people who are visiting. But no, he did a really nice job. I thought was really positive. And it was really neat because he actually traveled down to Texas, spent a week with his grandfather building them in his wood shop. And then they drove them back up here, painted them. And he's just a very, very good young man. I mean, he'll go very far in life. It's just neat to see the work that they did on that. So just wanted to publicly recognize him and his project.
So Jeff, I'll just say, I think this was a really neat project because, I mean, I said... said this before, when, sometime you go to, you're trying to find somebody, you haven't been there in a couple of years, and it's, it was very, I think it was very creative and, and, and needed.
Well, what we want to do, and we're working on a multi-year process to actually put all of our records in digital format, um, where we could then be able to print out a book. So you might be able to have, you've seen that probably before, where you go to monuments or something like that, where you can look up under a name and be able to see that they're in Section One, Grade forty-two, whatever, and, and be able to at least try to find your way to that location. So that's our, our future goal with that.
Okay. Anybody else? Any, okay, alright. Jeff, thank you for that. Uh, ten D is Letter from State Representative Don Berwick regarding State Eight. It was in the packet. I don't know, Martin, do we need to say, or Lisa, say anything about this?
No.
Looks like a, a good thing, I guess, a good amount.
Well, uh, from time to time, we get, uh, correspondence from our representatives, and, uh, felt that we should just include it in the packet for you guys.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Alright, uh, ten E, Village, Village Department Head Staff, anybody? How about ten F, Village Board Comments? Anybody have anything? Jerry's got something.
I do, I do.
Welcome back, Jerry, by the way.
Thank you. I, um, in light of the fact that we finally made a decision about the library tonight, I would like to see on a very recent, or a very, uh, very soon on an agenda, an item regarding the sale, or the, and I shouldn't say the sale, finding a developer for that property, a, an appropriate developer.
You're talking about the North Main Site?
The North Main Site, yeah, and, uh, someone that could develop something that would fit into that neighborhood.
Okay.
And, uh, I would like it to be something related to affordable senior housing.
Alright.
So I'd like to see that on a, in an agenda soon.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Okay? Alright, let's, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I do, I have a comment.
Sorry, Carlene, let me see.
I, I guess I don't think that, I mean, I'm kind of pushing back a little bit, Jerry. I, it's not that I don't want to see a project there, but I don't think that we should prescribe it, that, you know, that we should ask the community what they, they want on that site before we say, "I'd like to see this." So perhaps what we want to do is maybe schedule something where a community has input. Now there's, the library's not going to go there. What would the community like to see go there?
I think you misunderstood. I, I said, "I would like to see that." We're going to be confined to whatever developer is forward, so.
I, I, well, okay. I'm, I'm just really conscious that when we as board members say something, then people who are watching this think that that's what we think we want to put there, and so I'm going to say, "Great, I, that may be a great project to go there."
Mm-hmm.
But I think the community should have input into what should go there, and that perhaps the next step is to say, "The library's not going to be there. What would the community like to see there?"
Okay.
Versus some sort of proposal that just materializes.
Well, let me rephrase that. I'd like to see that piece of property put back on the tax roll.
There you go.
That's good. Alright, that's, alright, thank you, Jerry. Okay, can we go down, let's go to eleven, Communication Miscellaneous Business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Eleven A is Approval of the Vouchers in the Amount of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three and forty-nine cents. Uh, can we get a motion in a second? We'll get it on the table, from Derek and Amanda? Okay. Alright, who's got some questions for Lisa? She's, she's ready for you. Derek's got one, or maybe more than one.
Uh, no, just one.
Okay.
Item one-two-two-seven-zero. There's about six of them that are all, six, seven, eight of them that are all the same size. Uh, municipal property insurance for various equipment, is that on this turn, or are those all actually the same price?
I'm sorry, what was the number again?
It's municipal property insurance.
One-two-two-seven-zero?
Yeah, that's property insurance.
So it is, at the actual, okay.
It's just allocated in about a public, uh, city.
Alright, Derek, that's it. Who else has got? Jerry? Got anything? Alright, Luke? You're our backup. Alright, alright, see, no other questions. Candy, if you want to take a voice vote, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Belo?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Wunch?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Eleven B, uh, Declaration of Surplus to Dispose of Unused Bank, Banking Stampers and Tokens. Staff is recommending that we approve that. That seems pretty self-explor- uh, explanatory. Amanda, I see your hand. Can you get a second on that one? Alright, Carlene, any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eleven C, Correction to the twenty twenty-two miscellaneous position pay scale for elected officials and chief inspectors. Little correction there, it was in our packet. Recommended motion is to approve. Yeah, you got a question? Alright.
I don't know if you want a motion first.
Let's do, let's do the motion first, and then we can, alright, Derek, give me a second? Luke? Alright, Amanda?
Yeah, um, I don't know the legalities here, but because I work on elections, isn't this voting to, like, increase the pay, and I would directly benefit from that, so maybe I'll abstain from it.
You want to abstain, yeah, just to be safe. Okay. Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, eleven D, Addendum to Purchase of Service Agreement between the Village of Oregon and County of Dane for Increased Provision of thirty-five hundred dollars in funds for Medicaid Case Management Services. Recommended motion is to approve. I don't know, is that, is that yours, Rachel? Do, do you want to say anything, or is it pretty self-explan-
It's just a matter of housekeeping for the county.
Okay.
They want to bring their books up to date by giving us more money, so.
Alright, very good.
Wow, okay.
Alright, so we'll take a motion in a second. Alright, Derek, I see, and Luke? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving along to eleven E, Addendum to Purchase of Service Agreement Between the Village of Oregon and County of Dane for Increased Provision of twelve hundred and ninety-nine dollars in funds for Op- Operation of State Licensed Adult Daycare Center. I'm assuming the same thing. I'll take a motion in a second. Carlene, I see, and Luke? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Eleven F, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh, zero, zero four, Authorized Representative File Application for Financial Assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Staff has recommended approval. This is actually, Jeff, I think you'll talk, but this is our, our lead, our lead grant for almost a million dollars we're trying to, to get.
Correct. It's just, uh, it, this is just a resolution that allows, and we keep it generic. Um, uh, they suggested keep it generic, so we don't have to do this in future filings if we need to, but, uh, that the village administrator can, um, act as the authorized representative.
Yep, yep. This would be a good grant for us. Okay.
Great.
Can we get a motion in a second? Amanda and Carlene, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're on to G, Additional Services Proposal Number One for Village of Oregon Village Hall remodel in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars. Staff recommendation is to approve. Anyone want to make a motion? Amanda and Luke, discussion? Yeah, Mike?
So, leaving curved walls and things like that in place in the building, how much less efficient does that make, that space?
Hmm. Not, not terribly. I mean, I, I think it, it does, it does affect us. I think, we still have plenty of room for growth in the new building, and I think, uh, this is one of those things that really came down to need versus want, and it definitely falls under the want but not need category. And, and so, um, I think it'll be, we are going to have a phenomenal building without the curve, with the curved walls still there.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, we got a motion in a second? Did you, you have a comment?
General question about this project. Are we seeing any timelines pushback just due to availability of material?
We, we are seeing the timeline pushback just because of, just this. I mean, when, when it came back with the cost estimate, and we had to say, "Okay, what do we start cutting out?" Um, to be honest with you, one of our large, probably a majority of our budget is being spent upstairs on the boardroom, and it's just a unfinished space, so that's probably the hardest part, but...
And the AV equipment?
And the AV equipment, but, you know, that's a priority in today's world. It's a priority that we have the ability to have the remote, uh, meetings.
Hybrid.
Huh, and what?
Hybrid meetings.
The hybrid meetings, exactly, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I guess, to go along with that point, what, are, are we struggling with the availability of the equipment that we need for the AV equipment?
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're still trying to get, we, we need to get this thing out to bid, and hopefully we'll do that in the next, in the coming weeks here.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll go to H, Now We Can Purchase a John Deere. Uh, here we go, Purchase of a John Deere, fifteen eighty-five, for mid-state equipment, for a total price of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine and fifty-six cents, and trading in the existing unit. Jeff, I don't know, you say anything, or do you want us to just go?
Well, when I started here, we were doing about a three-year rotation. Now we've, now we've switched it up to about a five-year rotation, and having the guys try to take really good care of the machines. Uh, we still get a, like, they gave us a fourteen-thousand-dollar trade-in on, on the machine towards a new one, and it's really worked out well. These, these machines get year-round use. We have attachments for clearing the snow brush attachment and snow blower attachment that we use during the winter months as well, so they're, they're very used and very appreciated machines in our system.
So Jeff, with the trade-in, it really comes down to almost, almost fifteen?
No, twenty-five thousand.
But I mean, with the trade-in?
With the trade-in, that is the cost.
That's with the trade-in?
That is with the trade-in. Yeah, they're about, we had originally budgeted almost thirty-five thousand for it, um, and, and what this means is we just won't have to borrow as much, um, in this next year. This will give us an amount. And the reason we're bringing it in now, to be honest with you, is, um, and getting back to kind of Derek's point, is this one is available, and they're not sure when they're going to get the next one.
Yeah, yeah.
We're seeing that in all of our equipment.
Yep.
But you have to get in line and just kind of take pieces when you can, and then sometimes wait a year or more for the others.
Okay. Alright, I think we need a motion, right? Can, I didn't do that yet. Motion in a second. I saw Derek's hand, and Luke, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Agreement for the Hauling of Waste Water Treatment Sludge.
Sludge.
With, uh, United Liquid Waste Recycling, from March first, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommendation is to approve that. We got a motion in a second?
You see, who am I seeing? Carlene and Amanda? Any discussion?
Jerry, this is usually when you say something. You ask a question.
Okay.
On this one?
Okay.
Alright, I guess he's okay with it. Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, now we, we got a couple here that we had the, these are carryovers when we didn't have quite enough people, but, uh, we got to do a, a wave, the first and second reading. So the first one is the Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-five, Ordinance Amending Section seven point oh-two and seven point oh-three-five, the Village Code of Ordinance relating to traffic code, including reservation of downtown parking spaces for snow storage and traffic flow restrictions near Rome Corners Elementary School. So let's do the, the, the wave, waving of the first and second reading first. Can we get a motion in a second for that? Luke and Amanda? Okay, so we got a...
I have a question, though, too, before we get too deep into this. That picture is of Oregon Middle School.
Um, yes, this is for OMS.
It says Rome Corners in the packet. I just wanted to clarify before we start making motions.
Yeah.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Alright, so Jeff, that should be?
It is at Oregon Middle School.
Oregon Middle School.
Rome Corners Intermediate, yes, because I was actually, yes. These are for, I stand corrected, my apologies. It should be, uh, Oregon Middle School.
Okay, alright.
Glad Leslie's not here anymore. She'll be just whacking me over the head.
Alright, alright, so we got a motion to, to wave the first and second readings. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, let us have a motion in a second to actually approve the ordinance.
It should be approved with the change. It should be approved with the change that was just highlighted.
Oh, with the change, I, sorry, Oregon Middle School. Okay.
So the picture's correct, and the typing is incorrect. Is that...
That is correct.
Clarifying? Okay, got it.
Alright, so motion in a second to approve. I see Luke and Amanda. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Alright, Mike?
I am to typos what Jerry is to expense vouchers. Uh, Section one E has a typo in it that you might want to correct. Parking in as opposed to, it should be parking is.
Okay, is prohibited relative, yes.
Alright, with, with that correction, we got a motion in a second. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, then we'll go to, we'll go to twelve, Reports of Committees. Items are for discussion, possible action. Plan Commission, we're gonna do a, a wave, this one first and second, too. I'll just read it. Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-one, Ordinance Changing the Zoning Classification of Property Located at two oh-one Liberty Park Drive and two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive from Central Business to Plan Development District, Oregon Parks Duplexes Lots Four through ten. Plan Commission Staff Rec- whose recommendation, um, is to, obviously, uh, motion to suspend the rules and to approve the motion. So let's do the suspended rules one first. You're gonna get a motion in a second. Amanda and then Mike? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, let's go, let's do the ordinance, Number twenty-two oh-one. I'll take a motion in a second to approve that. Derek and Luke, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, twelve, twelve A two, Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-two, Ordinance Changing the Zoning Classification of Property Located at one thirteen and one seventeen South Main Street, from Central Business to Plan Develop District. The Ready Set Lighted Sign, Plan Commission and Staff Rec- Recommendation is Motion to Suspend, Approve the Suspension of the Rules and the Ordinance. So, let's do the Suspension of the Rules first. Motion second. Amanda and Derek, okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Alright, let's, then let's do the ordinance. I'll take a motion in a second. Amanda and Derek, any other discussion? Alright, hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Alright, we're done with those second, first and second waves. Alright, we're on to twelve, um, twelve A three, Specific Implementation Plan SIP for Signage at one thirteen and one seventeen South Main Street, Submitted by Yours and Hours LLC. Uh, the Ready Set, Plan Commission Staff Recommend Motion is to Approve the SIP. Can we get a motion in a second on that? Amanda and Luke, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Alright, we're getting there. Thirteen, Unfinished Business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Thirteen A, we got to do another wave. Uh, Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-four, Ordinance Creating Section one point three-nine of Ordinance Oregon Municipal Code Regarding the Creation of an Adha- Ad hoc Sustainability Committee. Staff Recommendation is to suspend the rules and, um, obviously approve the, the motion, the ordinance. So, can we do, let's do the suspension first. Luke and Carlene, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then let's do the ordinance then, twenty-two oh-four. Mike, okay, you, you making a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we get a second? Amanda, discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Thirteen B, Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-three, Ordinance Amending Sections two point oh-three-two and two point oh-six-seven of the Village Code of Ordinance relating to Rules of Procedure. Staff Recommendation is to suspend the rules and also approve the ordinance. Can we do, get, let's, let's do the, wave the first reading first, get motion. Carlene and Amanda, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, let's do the most, let's do the ordinance. Motion in a second to approve that?
We're on thirteen C.
B? Yep.
Okay.
I know, I'm moving fast here.
I'm like, wait a minute, where are we again?
So I'm still looking for a motion in a second for that one, to approve the ordinance. Alright, Jerry?
Is this one, page one sixty-six of the packet?
Yeah, one sixty-five, one sixty-five.
One sixty-five, okay, I just want to make this out.
Oh, oh, this is just the, the ability to meet virtually?
Yes.
Yep.
This says item thirteen C for...
Yeah, we're in the B part.
Alright, yeah, we're in thirteen B, and so Jerry, Jerry made the motion, and Luke? Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, we're getting there. We're on to C, thirteen, thirteen C. Is Resolution Number 2203, a resolution establishing interim rules governing meetings and attendance at meetings. Staff recommendation is to approve. Looking for a motion in a second on this one?
So, this is the, the thing that I handed out.
Oh, at the end?
That you should have at your, at your desk there. So, I actually had Jenna Jacobson, she reached out to me this afternoon, and she noticed a, a sentence that I think needs to be clarified better. Is Section 6C, it's that last sentence there that says, "All attendees shall sign in using their full legal names." That paragraph starts out by, with members, which was referring to village board members, and then it starts to use attendees, so it's kind of confusing as to who is, is it referencing the public? So, it's just a little confusing. So, I had an amendment there that I handed out at the beginning of the meeting that would just change attendees to all members, and then till, shall sign in using their name, rather than using full legal name.
Okay. So, we're looking for a motion to approve with the changes that Martin just talked about. Jerry? Mike, second?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Carleen?
I, I have a question about whether or not we need to have anything about attendees or not, or we don't need.
No, and actually, that's, I think that's only one of two spots where it's mentioned, attendees is mentioned. Otherwise, the public is only, it just says that the public can attend virtually or in person, depending on how the meeting is held. So, there's really no limitation or restriction put on the public.
Yeah, I mean, we don't make people sign in when they come in.
Right.
Okay.
All right, yeah, Amanda, before we go?
Yeah, I also was, I don't want to complicate and bog this down too much, but I just, I'm wondering if we want to put it in our ordinance about adding people's pronouns, making at least board members put in their preferred pronouns to, as a way of making everybody feel welcome and comfortable. But I don't know if it needs to be part of the ordinance, or what people's thoughts are.
If you want it to be a policy, it would have to be in the, the resolution.
I mean, I like it as a way for making trans folks feel like we'd use their proper pronouns if they came before us, and, and we recognize that people are different, and just, as a nod to being more inclusive.
Yeah, I guess, again, I'll bog this down, but I would, I would agree with Amanda on that. I don't think it's a bad idea to have at least the village make that in there.
Can you offer an amendment that would, that we can vote on right now?
Yeah, I, I would, I would just, I would say, add, say, change that last sentence that we've been looking at, "All members shall sign in using their names and preferred pronouns."
Okay.
I've got Peterson moved, then.
Second. Yeah, I think, I think Mike didn't choose second. Yeah, so, Amanda and Mike second, so we have a motion with, we want to include Martin's changes and Amanda's changes to that, so.
Well, how did you word that? So, it was all members, did you say?
I said all members. I mean, it'd be nice if staff were willing to do that, too.
Or the pub, so just the village board members?
Just, for sure, the board. I think that's, that's for sure us.
I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
I think we should clarify at village board members, don't we?
Yeah, and that's what, yeah, it, members is, yep, members is defined as a member of the village board in the resolution, so I just want to make sure that it was ju, this, what you suggested is just contained to village board members.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that, in definitions, it says members is village board members.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
But I would, I would hope that would encourage staff and attendees and other people to do the same, so. But I think for sure us.
Okay. So, we got a motion in a second with Martin's changes and Amanda's changes to the resolution. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business proposed to provide comprehensive water rate study and sewer rate study with Ellers. Jeff, is that you? You want to, or who is this?
I can do this one.
You want to do it?
Probably, Martin.
Okay, Martin.
So, uh, it says new business, but we did talk about this during the budget process last fall, and when we were presented with the financial management plan from Ellers, indicating that we should be taking a look at our, our utility rates to make sure that we're keeping ahead of where we need to be. And so, this proposal would have Ellers do that study and analysis, and assist us with the actual rate case before the Public Service Commission for the water utility. So, this would just authorize the work. It wouldn't authorize rates or anything like that yet. Those would still come before you for consideration.
Okay. All right. We get a motion in a second to authorize moving forward. So, Amanda and it's on Derek right here, okay? Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, fourteen B, future agenda items. What do you have? Derek, you want to go first?
Yeah, Mike's going for the same thing here, and, and the future of the rest of the Hellfire and Keller site. Like, put that on near future agenda item, see if we can get that for conservation.
All right, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I have a second one, which is including the remainder of the old school side out there as part of the parks.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay. Look at where we're at, fifteen, adjournments. I'll take a motion in a second. Luke and Amanda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourned. Perfect.